Okay. Good morning, everybody. I call the meeting of April 28th, 2020 to order. And I'd like to call on Sean Noonan. Sean Noonan, a first responder himself. Let's call on Sean Noonan to lead us in invocation. Member Noonan.
The pledge?
Yes, sir. What did I say? I'm sorry. Pledge of allegiance. Forgive me. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite, and just.
Thank you, Member Noonan, for the pledge of allegiance. If I may, I'd like to begin, like we did last time, with a moment of silence in honor of those fighting COVID-19 and for those who have lost their battle. Upon a conclusion of our moment of silence, I call on Member Sadia Covert to lead us in invocation. Member Covert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the name of God, the merciful and the compassionate. Praise be to God, the Lord of the entire universe, the merciful, the compassionate, the master of the day of judgment. You alone do we worship and you alone do we turn to for help. Guide us to the straight way, the way of those whom you have favored, who did not incur your wrath, and those who are not astray. Lord, we pray for those who have passed away from COVID-19 and for their families. We pray for their safety. We pray for the safety and health of the first responders, doctors, nurses, grocers, volunteers, our leaders, and all those who are on the front lines of this pandemic, not only for our country, for our county, but also for the entire world. Bless our leadership, our constituents, and our country, and protect us from the effects of this pandemic. We ask you for strength and conviction during this difficult time, and we put all our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Member Covert, for your invocation during this Ramadan period of time. I would like to call on Mr. Adam Johnson, right, who's here in place of the clerk to call the roll. Mr. Clerk.
Chaplin.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
DeSart.
Here.
DeCiani.
Here.
Ekoff.
Bambino.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Kuduski.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Ozog.
Mary, you're on mute.
I'm Mary.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Rennahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
Zay.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. Good morning, everybody. We are conducting this meeting remotely to accommodate the public health need and directions for social distancing, physical distancing, and work-at-home requirements as part of DuPage County's COVID-19 response. We have some welcome news to share this week. We have received our county's allocation from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES, Act. This act provides that payments from the fund may only be used to cover costs that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health coronavirus emergency; two, the payments from the fund may only be used to cover costs that were not accounted for in the county's most recent budget; and, three, these payments from this fund may only be used to cover costs that were incurred during the period beginning March 1, 2020, and ending December 30, 2020. So, we will draw down these funds only to pay approved expenses. These funds may not be used for regular payroll or to replace lost revenue. I would like to thank our federal lobbyist, Bill Vining, for helping us to obtain and understand the rules attached to this allocation. Cheryl Marquet and our finance department ensured we were properly registered to receive the allocation, and our federal stimulus work group will help us determine eligible expenses as we carefully draw down funds as allowed by the U.S. Treasury rules. Those rules are rather complex, and explanatory materials are still being developed. So, at our next county board meeting, we will have additional details to report about our efforts to recover costs related to the COVID-19 emergency. Finally, I could not complete my remarks today without mentioning Tony Charlton. That's right. Tony. Tony, as you know, is our longtime Director of Stormwater Management. Today is Tony's last county board meeting, and as he officially retires on May 1. Tony joined the county in 1945, oh, I'm sorry, 1985, as a civil engineer, and for 35 years, Tony worked on stormwater projects all around DuPage County. 20 years ago, Tony was named Department Head, and since then, the DuPage County Stormwater Department has been known far and wide, frankly, as an award-winning group consistently demonstrating best practices. So, Tony, you're a true professional and a leader, recognized as an expert around our region and the state. I can say without hesitation that the County of DuPage and the issue of stormwater and the people that are impacted by it are better off because of Tony Charlton. So, thank you for a job well done, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our Vice Chair and Stormwater Committee Chairman Jim Zay to continue our tribute. Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, obviously, this is not the way we wanted to honor Tony after 35 years, but again, on May 1, at 4:01, we're making him work the whole day on May 1. Tony's going to retire after 35 years. You know, during that time, the last 20 years, as the chairman said, as Director of Stormwater, we have done a multitude of projects: Almhurst Quarry, Wooddale Light Task, the West Branch, Bartlett, the Beaver Pond Project, Armstrong Park, and Tony's been involved in all those projects, and I can tell you, as we're known throughout the state, as probably one of the best, or the best, stormwater department in the state of Illinois. A little bit about Tony. As we had known, in 2019, he was awarded the Illinois Chapter of American Society of Civil Engineers Government Engineer of the Year, then his career. But Tony also did get the Young Engineer of the Year when he started, so unbelievable. He's only one of, I think, two people in the state of Illinois that has received that. Tony has really done a great job over 40 staff that he runs day-to-day and has really mentored a lot of these people. On a personal note, Tony and I have been friends for over 20 years. Sorry to see Tony go, but he well-deserved his 35 years here at the county. He's a friend. I've seen his family grow up with his wife, Joellen, Haley, and Nick. I still have pictures of Nick when he was at the Warrenville Fire Department at a night, one of their open houses, with my young son, Tyler, showing him all the stuff. So, I can't tell you that Tony will be missed, misses friendship. And again, thank you, Tony, for 35 years. We do have this nice plaque that says to Tony Charlton, "Thank you for 35 years of outstanding service, May 1, 2020." So, it's a great plaque. I'm going to hand it over to Tony right now. I think he's on the call. By Wonka Vision.
Wow. Very nice.
But again, thank you, Tony, for all of your commitment to DuPage County, and we always wish you the best here on your retirement. So, I don't know if Tony's on or not. Is Tony on?
Yeah, he's on.
I'm here. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Zay, and all the members of the board. It's been a privilege to be there for 35 years. I started out as a civil engineer, and when you'd watch the news, the first county that would be shown to be susceptible to flooding would always be DuPage County, and it stayed that way for about the first 10 years. But the leadership we had back then, starting with Chairman Knifer, leading all the way up to today's Chairman Cronin, the board has been supportive. I've been lucky enough to have an outstanding staff to work with. They're my partners. They're my friends. It's been a great time. I'm grateful for the family that I've had that has stayed with me all this time, and it's hard to leave after 35 years, but it's also kind. I've got an outstanding group that's there. It's the right time to go. I know most of the board members. Now, when I first started, pretty much every board member who was on that board had run because of some kind of flooding issue within their town or their township, and now I don't think there's very many of you that have had that experience. And it's a personal satisfaction for me, but also reflection on how good this department is. It is one of the best in the state. It's the best in the state, and it's one of the best in the country, and all of us deserve that credit, and I appreciate the support I've had from all of you to get there. So, thank you very much.
Hey, Tony. Thank you.
That's Tony.
Member Solomon? Okay, great. Well, thank you, Tony. That was awesome, and I think there's some sort of virtual tribute on Friday at 4 o'clock, and so I'm looking forward to that. It's, again, it's too bad that we can't be in person. I think we're all social creatures.
Chairman, if I may?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it there.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout-out to Tony. I ran for Stormwater. It was one of my top issues. We had major floods in Almhurst. Tony, you've been a leader. You've guided this county through a lot of challenges, and I know Almhurst and many of the communities they represent, from Addison all the way down Salt Creek into Hinsdale, Villa Park. We appreciate your leadership. You've been the steady hand at the wheel in crisis, and, you know, you were with me when the federal delegation come to Almhurst with all the mayors, and you were right there in the trenches with us, making sure we got our fair share from FEMA and Capitol Projects got done, and I can't thank you enough. You've been a great leader and a consummate professional in that position. So, Tony, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Member DeCiani. Okay.
Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I can't. How do I? I can't see who's seeking recognition on here. Forgive me, Jim. My machine is set up, so I can't see. So, yeah, please, just, you know, speak up. That'd be...
All right. Just wanted an opportunity. Tony, when I first met you 25 years ago, I actually thought your first name was an expletive deleted, Tony Charlton. But over the years, I learned that that came mostly from people who didn't understand what you're doing and from developers who didn't care. I think you've done a phenomenal job over the years. You've made me a believer in everything you do in your department. The way you've trained your staff, the way you've brought them and nurtured them is phenomenal. You made DuPage. You said DuPage was number one in the state. I'm actually going to go out on a limb and take that a little bit further, you know, based upon what you can and cannot do for the Army Corps and things of that nature. I'm always shocked when I'm able to say things and people look at me and I go, "Well, we're DuPage. We're a little bit different. We've been ahead of the curve for the last 20 years," and that's mostly because of you. And I just know that after 35 years, it's time for you, Joellen, Haley, and Nick and everybody to enjoy themselves, and I hope you have a great retirement and always feel free to give me a call, and I hope you do retire on the west coast of Florida so that we can still see each other every so often and talk about how badly they're flooding. So, Tony, we started out a little rough 25 years ago, but it's been phenomenal, and as I look out of my house over McDowell Grove and the Faywell Dam, everything you said was true, and I'm glad I eventually came to know that. So, thank you very much for everything, Tony.
Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Okay, great. Thanks again, Tony. We're going to miss you. Onto the order of Chairman's Report. We did that, didn't we? Onto the order of consent. No, we didn't do that either. Public comment. Forgive me. I'm a little bit convoluted here. So, yes, according to our rules, we invite members of the public to come and address the board in this remote setting. We have set up a system where people can offer commentary through the Internet, email, and so I turn it over to Connor McCarthy to address and present public comment. Please proceed.
There are four portions of public comment for the county board meeting. First public comment is Charles Gerut, G-E-R-U-T, of Lombard. His comment states, "In view of the current status of pandemic unemployment in the nation, I request that the deadlines for real estate collections should be moved back from June 1 and September 1 to July 15, October 15." That concludes his comment. Second comment is from Carlo Williams, representing AFSCME Council 31. It's regarding the FIR 0335-20 resolution. It states, "Dear county board members, on behalf of the frontline healthcare workers at the DuPage County Care Center, proudly represented by AFSCME Council 31, our union opposes today's resolution to deny DuPage County Care Center healthcare workers the same rights given to all other DuPage County employees under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Every day, our brave CNAs, nurses, housekeepers, dietary workers, rehabilitation, and ancillary staff work to provide excellent necessary care to our vulnerable residents. They do this work despite the risk to themselves and their families. Our members may come to work in scrubs and uniforms instead of capes, but they are heroes, and while we appreciate the words of recognition for their effort, these employees need and deserve more than words. They need action. We are now we are told that DuPage County will require our frontline workers to exhaust any earned benefit time if they require emergency leave due to the coronavirus. If and one such time is exhausted, the county will advance up to 10 sick days that must be paid back. Already, two DuPage County Care Center employees have tested positive for COVID-19. While being exposed to COVID-19 has always been a risk, we are now dealing with the unease and uncertainty as more employees are waiting to be tested. Under this proposed resolution, DuPage County would treat those on the front lines of healthcare as second-class employees. There is no requirement that it do so. This action is taken as a matter of choice. In exchange for these risks we take on the front lines every day, we are asked to be treated with respect. We deserve the same rights that other DuPage County employees are receiving. We encourage you to immediately grant us the same right to emergency sick leave if we contract COVID-19, and we urge you to support a fair contract for the DuPage County Care Center employees. If you support everyday heroes of the DuPage County Care Center, then act today to let them keep the benefits they deserve." That concludes your comment. Next comment is from Joseph Williams, the Queen Bee School District 16, says, "Members of the county board, thank you for taking the time to consider the potential impact of your deliberations on public school funding for the 2020-2021 school year, and thank you to Mr. Tim Elliott for inviting the DuPage County Public Schools into the dialogue. We understand the responsibility that you have to the citizens of DuPage County and appreciate your continued leadership and concern for the present and future of our county. We have reviewed the proposed ordinance and would like to voice our support for the measure that provides relief in the form of a waiver of late fees for taxpayers who have been negatively impacted by the current public health crisis. This measure is both timely and appropriate. We continue to have concern regarding the impact of any proposal that contains fee waivers without an eligibility criteria. Measures without criteria could reasonably result in the failure to capture much-needed revenues from individuals and businesses who are able to pay on time. We remain steadfastly committed to providing an outstanding education to our students under any circumstances presented and look forward to our continued partnership. Respectfully submitted, DuPage County Superintendent James, Dr. James Stettler, Dr. John Langton, Dr. John Corbett, Dr. John Butts, Dr. Mary Henderson, Dr. Jerry O'Shea, Dr. Joseph Williams, Dr. Jim Wohl, Ms. Christina Davis, Dr. Matt Rich, Dr. Melissa Skousky, Dr. Theodore Steck, Dr. Anthony Palasamo, Dr. Jake Chung, Dr. Paul O'Malley, Dr. Kevin Russell, Dr. Sean Nugent, Dr. Robert DiCarlo, Dr. Victor Simon, Dr. Kerry Fodderero, Dr. Ray Lechner, and Dr. Griff Powell, Dr. Patrick Broncato, Ms. Tammy Prentice, Dr. David Larson, Dr. Scott Helton, Dr. Emily Tamrow, Dr. David H. Hill, Dr. Moses Chang, Dr. Hank Healy, Mr. James Ongtenko, O-N-G-T-E-N-G-C-O, Dr. Thomas Schneider, Dr. Hector Garcia, Dr. Kevin Carey, or Mr. Kevin Carey, and Dr. David Moyer. That concludes their comments. There's one additional comment from Jan Shaw of Wheaton. Her comment states, "On April 14, 2020, the Daily Herald ran an article titled 'DuPage County Board Members Appear to Support a Proposal to Waive Late Fees for Residents Unable to Pay Their Property Taxes Because of the COVID-19 Pandemic.' Then on April 17, 2020, a follow-up titled 'DuPage County Schools Concerned About Impact of Potential Property Tax Delays.' According to the second article, a letter signed by 34 out of 42 DuPage County school superintendents asks county board members to consider 'important facts,' educators are concerned that removing late penalties could lead to delayed revenue for districts and force several to do short-term borrowing just to make payroll. That statement comes across as greedy and tone-deaf. Worse yet, I believe it is false, false in all capital letters, for emphasis. The property tax money normally comes half in June and the second half, three months later in September. It must last all year. The low point for end-of-month cash on hand is normally the end of May, so long as the schools receive at least 25% of their property tax revenues by June 1, another 25% by September 1, the third 25% by December 1, and the remainder by March 1, they should be just fine. I suspect other taxing bodies follow a similar pattern. We also know that many taxpayers will have already put the money in escrow or be willing and able to pay on time. This proposal should not be debilitating to any local government agency. Let's give our neighbors who have truly been hurt by this government-induced shutdown a break. The proposed fee waiver form, sorry, waiver request form can be found on page 460 of the packet for the April 28 finance meeting. It is to be voted on at the April 28, 10 a.m. regular board meeting. Thank you for making it only one page. However, the reasons for requesting are incomplete at best and, quote, 'greedy and tone-deaf at worst.' A, I was laid off or terminated from employment on March 9, 2020, and was employed at least 90 days prior. B, I read the subject parcel and have not been able to collect rent since March 1, 2020. C, I operate a business that has been shut down due to being classified as nonessential, and I have not applied for the Paycheck Protection Program, quote, PPP, close quote, of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Why not something as simple as I/We cannot pay the entire first property tax installment on time because our income is substantially diminished due to the COVID government-ordered shutdown? If you want statistics for reasons you left out, I took a pay cut. I work on commission and sales are down due to the shutdown. My business, while deemed, quote, 'essential,' close quote, is suffering from a sharp decrease in sales. You should also remove the caveats on the three original reasons. Many who applied for the Paycheck Protection Program have yet to be approved and may or may not ever see any money, and even those who receive PPP money may still be struggling. If our government doesn't help these small businesses survive this, we may no longer have a tax base to continue funding all the government programs in future years. I drop the, quote, 'under penalty of perjury' line as it's not worth enforcing it anyway. I'd add a line for enclosing an optional partial payment, and be sure to enclose a copy of the form with every property tax bill. This proposal, if properly passed, will be seen as positive by the whole community." That concludes your comment. That's all the public comment I have, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. So, we move on to the order of business entitled Consent. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott. Hart. Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Okay. The items are adopted. Move on to the order of county board. Member Jim Zay.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman. We have some appointments today. I move on CBR 319-20, the appointment of Philip A. Reyes to the Sheriff's Mayor Commission.
A motion and a second. Member Rutledge, seeking recognition.
Thank you, Chairman. I kind of spilled my thunder in finance, but I'll be voting no on this appointment. This gentleman has been in this position for 18 years, and because of my concern that we're not giving those opportunities to the rest of our community, I did ask for your office to put together a list of coming appointments. Typically, unless we go through every link on the website for all of these different committees, we don't know what's coming up until we get an email from you, Mr. Chairman, that says you're going to ask us to vote on those people. I'm not a term-limit fan, but the voters get to decide, and in this case, I think that this appointment is a little long in the tooth, and I would prefer that we not keep those appointments going indefinitely. So, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else seeking recognition? Mr. Zay?
Yeah. To close, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments. I know Mr. Reyes, Mr. Reyes, 18 years of experience and dedication is unreplaceable. This is, the sheriff's commission is balanced between Republicans and Democrat. This is a Republican seat that is being brought forward today. I know Mr. Reyes. He's a friend. I can tell you, he's a small business owner. He's served his community in various elected spots, from the Village of Winfield to the president of the West Chicago School District. His volunteerism, I can tell you, is second to none. He and his Knights of Columbus and Winfield, single-handedly take care of the Ronald McDonald House that's at CDH. They do golf outings. They do different meals. His volunteerism is unbelievable. Again, his experience there, he is the chairman of the mayor commission. The new sheriff has requested changes when he came in and how the mayor commission reviews new applicants and promotions, which they are doing right now, and Mr. Reyes is heading that up with his knowledge and experience. So, Tony has done a lot over the years there, and to lose him right now in the middle of this would be a detriment to the sheriff's office and to the county, so I'm asking for a yes vote. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Member Rutledge, seeking recognition?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just want to add that if this gentleman is indeed irreplaceable because he's been in that position for 18 years, that's another reason that we need to take a look at these appointments and get a broader base of knowledge that is supporting our staff and electeds. Thank you.
Okay. There's been some discussion. We, Members Zay, I think, closed.
Mary Ozag, oh, Mary Ozag needs to... Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mary, is there something wrong with your microphone?
No, it's on.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to call for a roll call, and I will be abstaining on this appointment.
Okay, yes, we would have a roll call. That's certainly in order. Did I hear someone else seeking recognition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Should we step out of our virtual room, I guess, if we're abstaining from the vote, or should we just...
I think announcing the abstention, and it would be recorded, you know, for the record, and I think that that's sufficient. I'm getting a nod from our parliamentarian and Assistant State's Attorney. So, yes, announcing your abstention, I think, would be sufficient for those who want to abstain. Anyone else seeking recognition for purposes of discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second and a roll call request. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Abstain.
DeSart.
Nay.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
No.
Ozog.
Abstain.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
No.
Solomon.
No.
Tornatori.
Sam, Tornatori, are you there?[1774.65]
Mute.
Aye.
Aye.
I have 12 voting aye, four voting nay, and two abstentions. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 332-20, the appointment of Joan K. Costin to the Lisle Woodridge Fire Protection District.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Yeah, I'm muted.
Mute.
Where'd Mary go?
She may have walked away for a moment. Video stopped as well.
Should I just continue then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Pachalsky.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Ozog.
Is she okay? Julie, can you help her?
I cannot.
Isn't the Brady Bunch?
If you've lost connection, just trigger as a, uh, trigger as a, she's on.
Well, let's see. We'll give her a chance here.
I did see her appear to step up, get away, step away from, uh, video, so.
I'll call her.
Yeah, give her a call.
Just called that awkward moment. Anybody?
If we're both determinative of the vote on this issue, I would think that if she stepped up of view, it'd be just like she stepped out of the room, and we should.
Okay, all right. And one more, uh, what's the roll call, please?
17 voting aye.
17 voting aye, one, uh, abstention. Um, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on CBR 333-20, the appointment of Chad S. Chafin to the Lisle Woodridge Fire Protection.
Second most favorable, leave.
Here's some audio here, somebody seeking.
Second most favorable role, leave.
Leave is granted. 17 zip. Please proceed, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 334-20, the appointment of David Shar as a member of the Emergency Telephone System Board.
Second most favorable role, leave.
Leave is granted. Okay, great. Thank you, Member Jim Zay. On to the Order of Finance, uh, Mr. Bob Larson. Member Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just, uh, under Chairman's remarks, just note that we had a very spirited, uh, and thoughtful discussion, uh, this morning in Finance Committee regarding a proposal that will allow us to provide taxpayers of Dupage County, give them the opportunity to have up to 90 days of relief from the obligation to pay their taxes. Uh, the real estate tax is the first installment beginning June 1. We did put in some, uh, requirements, uh, that will allow, uh, some certainty in how this is going to be accomplished, trying to balance the interests of the tax, taxing bodies for whom we collect taxes, as well as the interest of the taxpayers that we serve as members of this board. I think we came to a good compromise on that. There were a lot of great ideas shared by everyone on the board. I appreciate the thoughtful consideration that led to this agreement that will ultimately serve the interests of taxpayers of Dupage County. And, uh, with that being said, I would, uh, move to combine agenda items A through E under Finance. All acceptance and appropriation of various grants.
And a motion to combine, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it. The items I, A through E are combined. Please proceed, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 325-20, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant in the amount of $66,555. Uh, 326-20, which is the, uh, Department of Economic, of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Trade Adjustment Assistance Grant in the amount of $95,143. FIR 327-20, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Community Services Block Grant, CARES Act, supplemental grant in the amount of $1,489,425. The National Forensic Science Improvement Grant, that's 328-20, uh, in the amount of $122,254, and 331-20, which is the additional funding for the Coroner's Certificate Fee Grant in the amount of $400, $4,336.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalsky.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would then move approval of FIR 304-20, a Scrivener's error to placing names on payroll.
Second most favorable role, leave.
Leave is granted. Mr. Larson.
I move approval of FIR 330-20, placing names on payroll.
Second most favorable.
Now, we have a comment from Member Desart.
Member Desart seeking recognition?
Yeah, I, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but now I have to because, um, all the, the, several of the numbers in the Finance Agenda were, were mis, um, appropriated. So I reached out to, um.
What do you mean by misappropriated?
Well, you saw my email, didn't you, Chairman?
Of course, I read all of your emails.
Well, I would hope so, but, uh, perhaps I don't have time because you've been too busy shaving.
What?
Pete likes that one.
Thanks, Pete. Um, so the email, so what I'm talking about is I sent, um, Nick Kotmeyer, Chairman Cronin, and Connor an email yesterday, um, saying, "On tomorrow's Dupage County Board Agenda, the item numbers slash letters under nine Finance are not correct in a couple of instances. Example, Agenda Item 9G, Placing Names on Payroll, is under 9H in the Board Packet. Item Number 9A, Budget Transfers, listed under 9G in the Board Packet. Agenda Item 9J, Modification of the 2019 Property Tax Year, is listed under 9I in the Board Packet." So I, I pointed those things out to you, and then, um, this morning, there was a corrected Agenda, but it seems like, I, I believe Chairman Larson is going off the old Agenda Item because the things that he's talking about, the things that he's bringing up for vote, the items are not, um, corresponding with the, the letters and the numbers on the, um, corrected Agenda.
Going off of the Agenda as posted on the Dupage County website as of this morning. I'm reading directly from the Dupage County website Agenda, and, uh, I understand that those issues were raised. I'm sure, still not sure what you mean by the term misappropriated. That's just something's taken that should not have been taken. I assume that was an inadvertent word choice, but.
Okay, well, I'm looking at Item 9F.
I can finish, please.
Look at, please, let's, let's move on. I mean, all of the items, uh, all the substance, everything that we are addressing here today was sent out in the courtesy communication. Um, the, uh, official, uh, Agenda that's published on our website is what we're working off of today. If the number, uh, or the letter doesn't correspond exactly from, from time to time, um, the most important, uh, and, and, and what we are certainly required to do and, and fulfill, uh, enthusiastically and completely is that we disclose every item that is on our Agenda. We were forwarding that information to individual Board members simply as a courtesy. Um, and, uh, but, uh, we'll work off of the, the, or published, uh, Agenda on the website, um, as we usually do from time to time. Um, there may be a letter or a, a number, um, that, that as, as, uh, we try to accommodate and get information to Board members.
There are a number of scheme bags.
So, I mean, all the information is here. This is really, um, please, I, I, your, your objection is noted for the record. Thank you, Member Desart.
It's not an objection. I'm just saying, we don't know now what we're voting on because we just voted on F, which is placing names on payroll, but Chairman Larson said it was the Scrivener's error placing names on payroll. So we just voted on something that wasn't.
I, I was very clear on it. Placing names on payroll, FIR 330-20.
But we didn't vote on that. We voted on the Scrivener's one. FIR 0304A-20.
I clearly articulated each matter we were voting on by designation when I asked for, when I moved on each of these individual items. Member Kuduski, I think, is seeking comments.
Please, Mr. Kuduski.
Uh, I got my other computer, and I got the one that's published online, and, you know, Member Desart's right. I mean, the one online shows F, it's placing names on file, and H is a Scrivener's error. So I'm just going off the one that's online.
All right, well, sorry. We'll just work off the ones online. I, I, sometimes I work on, off of the one that's the courtesy copy. Um, you know, I have the ability to kind of understand where we're going and what we're doing, but, okay, fine.
Well, I assume residents are looking at online. They don't have our courtesy copy.
Correct. So we work off of the one that's online, of course, always.
And that's the one I printed. The one online is the one I printed. So I don't even know what a courtesy copy is. I print out the one online.
The courtesy copy is the one that goes out to individual Board members a little earlier, just in an effort to share information with you and be open and transparent, and, but yes, we'll always work off of the online-printed, uh, Agenda. Even though both Agendas are absolutely complete, there may have been, uh, an order or a letter that may have been, um, not exactly reflective of what's on the, the Agenda, the substance. Everything is the same.
Well, I have been working from the Agenda as currently listed online. I pulled it up online at the start of this meeting, but, uh, to the extent that there's any question or complaint, I understand that some people may be looking at a different version of it, though. We voted on, I was identifying them by subject matter. Doesn't really matter what order they're in. We voted on FIR 304-20, which is a Scrivener's error for placing names on payroll. I believe we approved that correction.
No.
And we are now moving on to FIR 330-20, which is placing names on payroll.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I think we could do that by, the next.
Second most favorable role, leave.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Then on my Agenda, as I see it, the next one is 329-20, which is budget transfers for various companies and accounting units.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
And, uh, move approval of FIR 335-20, extending healthcare providers and emergency responders to County Dupage, excluding them from.
Second.
Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
There's been a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Chairman, yeah.
Member, uh, Chaplin seeking recognition.
And, and Member Selman as well. Um, I just, I was wondering if there's, somebody could address the, um, public comment that was made regarding, um, this item on the Agenda. I, to share some of those concerns. I did ask in Finance, um, whether this included all of the, um, employees over at the Care Center, and it does include all the employees, and that includes our custodial staff over there, which I, um, would assume part of that. You know, and some of these employees there are making like $10.92 an hour, and if they were to get sick from COVID and they were excluded from this, it might provide a real hardship for them. So those are some of my concerns.
Okay, further discussion, Member Selman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so if, sort of going on Member Chaplin's, I think the public comment was confused, if, is my understanding. My understanding is that this provision is only excluding them from the sort of extra things, because we're obviously, we're not calling in health workers if they're sick to do their job because they can't. It's when the healthcare workers, you know, their child is out of school. If, and in any other department, they would be able to use the provisions under the Subemergency Act to take that time to care for their families. But we're saying that, of course, healthcare workers and first responders, we simply don't have the staff and the numbers to do that. And so I, so I think, one, if Janelle could just explicitly clarify that that's the case, that this is only talking about those childcare and sort of extraneous issues, and not anything health-related. And then my second part is during Finance, we had asked, you know, there are going to be people who have children, who like Member Chaplin said, make $10.92 an hour and can't send their kids to school, and we can't just tell them, "Figure that out. We don't pay them enough to figure that out." So I'm asking what the resources are that we can offer them. Understanding that this is a, we have to do this so that we have enough people in the building doing their jobs, but, you know, our employees are human beings with families. We should treat them as such.
Absolutely. Further discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition?
Remember, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larson.
I think that was.
Mr. DeCiani first, then Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to note that, uh, many of our communities are doing this. Uh, Elmhurst, for instance, did this for, uh, police and firefighters and even our Public Works, uh, folks. Uh, we've had, uh, issues with storms and whatnot, where those, those, those Public Works folks are very important, uh, and critical to have on the job. Um, you know, we're, we're in the process of working with, um, uh, the union and other issues to help them with, with, uh, extra COVID issues, which I can't get into because it's, it's executive session, but, but, um, those are on the table for them, and, um, um, you know, this is just making sure that those 300 people that are vulnerable at the Care Center, uh, have care. We can't have interruption over there. We're already short-staffed as it is, and, uh, the federal law gives us this ability to exempt, uh, these types of folks. Um, and again, it's, it's, uh, this is the time where we can't have, uh, have people taking advantage of, of the federal law that was meant to exempt first responders and frontline medical workers. These are those folks. Um, and, um, you know, we always want to be fair with our nurses and our CNAs, and, and there's, there's items on the table that will help compensate them for these times as well. So, uh, and then we've already passed a family, um, uh, leave, uh, as part of our own, um, uh, county initiative, which I applaud your leadership on, to give our, all of our employees the ability to have some extra time. Uh, but, uh, this, this one is a federal exemption that is given to us. I think it's smart that we take advantage of it, uh, because we cannot afford to leave those vulnerable people at harm's way, given what's going on right now. So I'm always about helping law enforcement and medical, uh, and this, you know, but we also have to realize that those folks are, who are on the frontlines are, are in a position that, uh, we need them there. Uh, we can't have them, uh, off, off the frontline, unless they're sick. If they're sick, they're going to take some time off naturally, but the federal, the federal law, uh, specifically exempts or gives us that ability to exempt, uh, these, these workers. And again, we're giving them all, other alternatives to make up for some of that, uh, hardship, uh, which are on the table now, which I can't discuss because it's executive session, but I, I think the good faith is there by the county all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Member DeCiani. Anyone else seeking recognition?
Chairman Rennahan.
Member Rennahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just kind of wanted to weigh in here. Uh, Member Selman, you had some questions about childcare workers, and I, I was concerned about that, too. Information that I had, that I believe, uh, Community Services also has, YWCA Metropolitan Chicago has been working with the Governor's Office of Early Childhood Development, Illinois Department of Human Services, and Department, and DCFS, to basically fund, uh, emergency childcare for, uh, workers. So, um, number is 800-781-7247. I mean, there are arrangements for that. Although we, we are not the intermediary, we are certainly in a position to direct people. So if that, if that helps, makes you feel better.
Yeah, very helpful. I would think that'd be awesome information to make sure we're pushing out to our staff.
I, I pushed it out. Feel free, yep.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Member Rennahan.
This is Mary Peeding. Can I chime in?
Yeah, please, Mary.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just a little bit more information on that program. So it is a state program. It is for essential workers. Um, there are currently 61 facilities within DuPage County that are, um, licensed and providing this, um, subsidized, uh, childcare for essential workers. It's provided at either no cost or low cost to the essential worker. So it's, uh, it is income-based. Um, there, there is that state phone, phone number, um, and, uh, there's also an email, uh, address for eligibility and locations. So the state will assist the essential worker in applying for the subsidy and then also in locating a, um, locating a, a provider that's participating. The Y in DuPage is also available if, uh, any particular healthcare facility is running into an issue where their individual workers aren't able to access a nearby childcare provider. Um, the Y will try and work with, with one of the 2,000 childcare providers in DuPage, um, to encourage them to open up to essential, uh, essential workers. There also is, uh, childcare available for second and third shift workers, um, as essential workers are 24/7 operat, operators. Um, so it, there does seem to be adequate, uh, resources, uh, at this time, and we, we, Community Services is certainly, um, more than willing to work with, uh, employees of the care center to help direct them to, um, to any resources that, that they need, uh, for childcare or frankly, for anything else.
Further discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition?
Can I chime in?
Yes, please.
Um, so we, we did present a package as, uh, member DCani indicated, and we're eager to get that in place. We, you know, we know our staff are eager as well. We have spent a, a significant amount of time and, and energy and dollars to obtain a robust, uh, personal protective equipment or PPE. We're very, um, um, we're in a really good position with, with the PPE that we have currently on hand. We are putting our staff in N95s and full PPE in certain circumstances when it's not indicated, and we're doing that, one, for their safety, but two, also for their comfort. And so, um, the, the staff is a priority and, uh, for us in making sure that they're safe. We do need to provide care to our residents, and we need to ensure that we have the staff to show up, as member Salmon said, in the room. Um, and how do we do that? And so, um, I think all members, um, here at the care center and employees, you know, have the goal, but, uh, they are fearful. And so the point of, of giving them that PPE is to reduce that and that anxiety as much as possible. They have been stellar. They've really risen to the occasion. Um, we're just, you know, constantly preparing for hopefully what will never come. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition? Member DCani.
Yeah, Janelle, I just want to say thank you for your leadership over there, and we've, we've kept that, that, uh, we've kept the care center COVID-free because of your leadership. You're taking temperatures multiple times a day. You're, you're super precautious. You've limited what's coming out of that building, and it's, that's, uh, I think a testament to the leadership of, of you and, and all your people that you've got. Your, your team is doing a great job. Um, I also would like to state, I did check with, uh, Sheriff Mendrick. He has applied this policy, uh, as well to his, his, uh, his men and women over at the sheriff's office. So this is something that is already implemented, uh, with our first responders on the public safety side, on, on law enforcement. I think it's our fiduciary duty to do this as well, uh, on the medical side and at the care center. So, uh, I, again, Janelle, thank you for your leadership. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's a very tough time, and you're doing a great job, considering, uh, the atmosphere we're dealing with right now.
Thank you. Anyone else seeking recognition? Okay, uh, um, member Larson.
To conclude, this, like many things that we have to do, requires balancing interests. Uh, the staff at the care center is trying to balance the interests of the safety of the residents while accommodating the employees there as best they can. This is striking the balance on both of those issues. I think it's an appropriate balance, and I support the measure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Larson. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Your mic's not.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. That concludes, uh, member Larson's report on, uh, finance. Onto the Order of Animal Services, Mr. Brian Kuduski.
You might think that that's the end of the report, because that's the last.
You're right. There you go. I'm working off of the, my individual one. Okay, so please proceed, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move finally approval of FIO 35-20, modification of the 2020 tax year late tax penalties as amended at, uh, Finance Committee, with various amendments that were approved by the committee.
There's a motion and a second. Is anyone else seeking recognition? A motion and a second.
Number Eckoff.
Leave. Leave is granted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Eckoff.
Okay, I asked some questions at Finance. I was hoping to get an answer at County Board. Number one is, I'm assuming drafted, uh, investments or assets of an individual are not considered. Is that correct?
Mr. Larson.
Right. The, the ordinance is as, as it reads, as we say in the legal business, the document speaks for itself. Um, we.
All right, so I'll speak. I think it's, you know, assets should be considered because somebody's got $10,000 in Microsoft stock and, you know, can't pay their taxes. They should be required to do something with that asset to pay their taxes. Number two, and only the treasurer can answer this, is she going to be making written, some type of written report, a paragraph or something as to who gets accepted into this program or who gets denied and why?
I'll leave that to the treasurer. That's a, a matter for another time. I don't think that's.
Is that on? I'm here.
Did you hear the question?
I heard the question. They'll be giving you reports periodically that how many people applied and how many were denied. Yes. If you want that report.
No, but were you going to give a actual reason as to why they're?
No. I, I think if they've applied, I, they've, I have checked one of these three boxes, that's adequate. I can tell you how many checked which box, I suppose, if you want.
I'm not arguing with you. I just want to know the answer.
Well, is that what, is that what's desired by the board, to know how many applied under each one of these items?
Well, I'm sure they're going to want to report, because I'm sure we're going to get a request to do this again. So I would like to report if nobody else does.
I would.
I would.
Here we are. Uh, Treasurer Henry, thank you.
Further discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition?
Member Rutledge is.
I can't see on here. You have to speak up. I'm sorry.
I'm reading about member Rutledge is.
Member Rutledge, please.
Thank you, Chairman.
Get down with these people.
That, um, I, I think that if people have significant stock that may pay their taxes.
I got it.
To sell that in a, in, in like one of the worst stock market crashes, uh, that we've seen, would, would create an additional hardship. As member Chaplin came, uh, talked about at Finance, the taxes are going to be paid by November 15th, whether they are paid by the, the homeowner or during a tax sale. So I, I'd have a real problem making people liquidate their assets in order to pay their property taxes.
That's a good point. Anyone else seeking recognition? Member Colvert.
Um, I just, I just wanted, I wholeheartedly support this ordinance, and I think this is a great idea, and it's really important to have. Um, and I'm, I'm going to be voting on this. I'm voting a yes. Um, I brought up, actually, member Pete DCani brought, uh, an issue up, um, in the Finance meeting, which I supported, of having a, um, more, a stronger proof of unemployment or termination or reduction in income. It didn't go through, uh, as a motion, but the only reason, I just want to get it on the record, that the only reason I bring up the proof of, providing proof of unemployment along with the oath, uh, is while I too trust people to tell the truth, we still need some type of a checks and balance to make sure we're getting a more accurate number of people who are truly suffering hardship by COVID-19. Um, significant people in our county do not escrow their taxes, which would mean if we do not have a stronger verification method, we may lose a lot of, um, tax funds that may adversely impact our schools and our parks and other taxing bodies. Um, in my district, we have School District 203 and 204. Um, they already struggle financially, and it's impressive how they've been managing their budget and how our community comes together to help out. And I just want to make sure that there's a balance where everybody is take, being taken care of and not opening the floodgates. So that's, that's all I wanted to comment, but I, I do support this ordinance, but I just wanted to make this comment for the record.
Yeah, thank you so much. As member Rutledge, um, said, you know, I, I'm, I'm just going to keep repeating this and repeating this for this over again. They're signing a perjury. If they sign it and they're, and they're not, um, truly in a hardship they're going to face, they could face, um, legal action against them. Secondly.
They have to actually prosecute.
Right prosecute them, right.
Which is a big undertaking.
Right. But I'm just saying, people know, you know, a lot of times when somebody says, if you're purging yourself, I think a lot of people, most people take that seriously. They don't want to purge themselves. Secondly, we asked in Finance, and, um, the treasurer stated that, has, has member Rutledge stated, we are going to get our tax one way or another, whether it's through homeowners paying it or tax sale. So, um, and it's not uncommon for people to pay their taxes late in DuPage County. Um, so, you know, this is a 90-day window we're giving people. Um, you know, I think during these hard times, you know, it's going to be hard, it's hard enough, then let alone having them give this information, which then could be foible, which the treasurer said would cause her and her department, um, a lot more work in redacting all of that information. Um, I don't want somebody's extra social security number, their employer's name, their, you know, what they made a year, what, all of that sitting in our county, um, coffers for somebody to foil. I mean, I just think it's way out of the scope of what, what we need to do here. Those are my comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeking recognition?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Uh, I just wanted to respond to that, that we're just asking for a one-page letter to verify a termination or reduction in income or unemployment, which doesn't necessarily include personal information like social security numbers. Um, and that could always be redacted. This would be a one-page document. But there, and the second point is, there's no way to verify, um, or determine who committed perjury. There's just no way to do that. So, you know, we lose out. So that's, that's.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Elliott.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I, um, I'm very supportive of this resolution, and I think, uh, this is the right thing to do. We're giving, uh, relief to people who badly need it, and I'm really proud of the discussion we had in the Finance Committee this morning, uh, because we had a lot of different ideas, and people were coming at it from a lot of different angles. And I think that the resolution as amended, uh, quite frankly, is a stronger resolution than it was when it came in this morning, and I think it's, it's a good product. And not only do I think we're doing the right thing, but I think we are doing it as a county board the right way. Uh, it was mentioned this morning that something north of 95% of the money that, uh, we take in, uh, doesn't wind up with DuPage County. It goes to other taxing bodies. And the responsible thing to do was to reach out to all those taxing bodies and get their buy-in, and I think that we've got it. And I think that the resolution that, uh, as amended from this morning that's before us, um, not only is the right thing for our taxpayers, but I think, I think we can say has the support of, of the vast majority of the taxing bodies that have weighed in on it. So I'm proud to move forward with this, and, um, I think this is the right thing to do.
Great. Thank you, member Elliott. Anyone else seeking recognition? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Larson?
We close, Mr. Chairman. I would just echo Mr. Elliott's comments. I think we had a great discussion, and people brought legitimate concerns. Not all of them were agreed upon, but people have concerns for the taxpayers, and people have concerns for the businesses, and they also have concerns for the taxing bodies who, for whom we have a fiduciary responsibility when collecting those taxes. I think this strikes a balance. It's not perfect. Not everybody's happy with every provision of it, but I think as presented and as amended today after a lengthy and, uh, well-thought-out discussion, I think we should pass this as a motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Larson. There's been a motion and a second. Uh, and there's been good conversation. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
No.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Okay, 17 voting aye, 1 voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Larson. A fine report. Now, onto the Order of Animal Services and Mr. Brian Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on 202088, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to ZOTAS Inc. to provide our veterinarian pharmaceuticals, vaccines, medical supplies, preventive treatments for animal services for one.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got one more.
Yes, sir.
Uh, 202086, recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to imaging systems for document transportation, prep, scanning, enhanced imaging, and, uh, visual, uh, image quality control, and daily imaging export maintenance of our backlog and ongoing monthly rabies certificates.
Most favorable rule?
Leave.
Leave.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, onto the Order of Economic Development, member Tim Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the way of a committee update, um, I would just want to remind all of the board members about the, the many resources that we've got with our partners at WorkNet DuPage on the employment side and ChooseDuPage, uh, on the employer side. Uh, maybe I drew those categories a little broadly, but, um, we've got tremendous assets there. And, uh, I know that many of you, like me, are probably hearing from a lot of constituents, uh, with employment and business opportunity-related issues, and I would really encourage you to direct them to the WorkNet, uh, page. Uh, Lisa Shavak and her team are doing a tremendous job there, and, uh, same thing with Greg Battleoff and, and the folks over at ChooseDuPage. So keep in mind, as we work through this time, that we do really have these great professionals that are available to us and our constituents who are doing a great work for us. And so, uh, with that, um, I would, uh, move approval of an amendment to Resolution EDR 9-20, approval of issuance of payments by DuPage County to training providers through the Trade Adjustment Assistance Grant.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This is on the amendment?
The proposal is an amendment itself.
Oh, okay, got it. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Salmon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DCani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Onto the Order of Health and Human Services, member Pete DCani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as far as a committee update, we've been working closely with our care center and our health department, uh, to make sure that our building stays COVID-free. Uh, great protocols. I mentioned earlier, Janelle Chadwick and her staff doing a great job of testing staff and making sure, uh, we keep, uh, keep that building and those vulnerable people safe. Also want to give a shout out to our health department Also want to give a shout out to our health department and to our state's attorney. We're working closely with our PCFs, releasing information on COVID-positive people in each community, so our first responders know what they're walking into. That came out about a week ago. I think, you know, we've seen other counties suing each other over this, and and I think, you know, this issue, DuPage County has always, I think, has looked at as a leader in how we work together and collaboration, yet protecting those people's identities, et cetera. But, you know, we're burning through a lot of PPE without having this communication, having to think every call could possibly be a COVID call. So, now we have great communication with our PCFs and their health departments. Bob Berlin did a great job of putting that agreement together. So, that's it for me on a committee update. I do have one item. It's HHS P0129-20. It's an agreement with Cisco Foods on a renewal for the care center. I have I have a motion, I asked for a motion, I have a motion on that, please, and looking for a second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Sorry, I should have muted.
Healy did cover.
Healy, aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Member DeCiani. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety. Member Grant Eckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By way of committee update, I just wanted to highlight the hard work of our sheriff and his staff. He's got a population of people that he needs to oversee, just like the convalescent center, and he has not had any COVID-19 outbreaks.
Knock on wood.
That's a, that's a great thing. I would move approval of JPS 10-20, recommendation for the approval of an amendment to Resolution JPS 24A-16 for contract with Allied Universal Security Services.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Eckoff. On to the Order of Public Works. Member Jim Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first like to let you know that I saw the first hummingbird of summer a few seconds ago. Cardinals are going crazy in the backyard with the squirrels. I move for approval of Item A1, which is 2020-94, a contract with Windy City Truck Repair for needed main engine repairs to the Vector truck. Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 10520, a contract with PISO and Associates for the Campus Landscaping Plan Phase II.
Second.
A motion and a second?
Most favorable role?
Leave.
Request for roll call is always in order. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
No.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
No.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
No.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
No.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
You, aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Okay. 14 for. 14 voting aye, 4 voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Without objection, I'd like to combine Items C through J of the Public Works Agenda.
A motion to combine C through J. All those in favor say aye. Or nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed without objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve FMP 12220, a contract to weatherproofing technology for annual roof inspection, maintenance, and minor repairs. FMP 12720, a contract to see ambrous plumbing and heating to provide time and material plummings as needed. PWP 12320, a contract to S&amp;S Engineering, Inc., to furnish and deliver K-Turbo blower parts and services as needed. PWP 12420, a contract to Alpha Laval for parts and services as needed for thickeners and bell presses. PWP 12520, a contract to LMK Technologies for lateral lining materials and equipment repairs as needed. Approval of PWP 12620, a contract to Material Systems, Inc., to furnish and install exterior stair steels, I'm sorry, steel stairs at the administration building. Move for approval of payment and claims for public works and facilities, and move for, on change order, to Contract 2729-001 issued to Evoqua Water Technologies LLC to provide deionized water for the power plant and the coroner's office as needed.
Second.
There's been a motion?
That was a motion by me.
Seconded by Member Larson. We need a roll call because
Need a roll call.
Aye.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Healy?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Healy. A fine report. On to the Order of Technology. Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on Item A, TEP 130-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Comcast Cable for Internet service and to upgrade from 1 gigabyte, gigabytes per second to 2 gigabytes per second for information technology.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution is adopted. On to the next item. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 131-20, recommendation for approval of a contract to Episerver, Inc., for annual maintenance fees for Ektron CMS 400 Content Management System.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Fine report. On to the Order of Transportation. Member Don Pachowski.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Under Consent Agenda 16A, I would move to combine and approve those items A1 through 5.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Or nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve 2020-90, a contract to HW Star Holdings Corporation for refuse disposal and recycling services from June 1st of 2020 to May 31st of 2020, not to exceed $20,000. Move to approve 2020-91, a contract to RoadSafe Traffic Systems for pavement marking tape from June 1st of 2020 to May 31st of 2021, not to exceed $10,949.83. Move to approve 2020-92, a contract to Southwind Industries for disposal of clean construction debris from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021, not to exceed $15,000. Move to approve 2020-93, a contract to Aaron's Hogan Walker for repair and replacement parts as needed from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021 for a contract not to exceed $16,000. And Item 5 is a consent item to HDR Engineering for revised Exhibit C.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Pachowski?
Thank you. Move to approve DTR 32320, an integral agreement between the County DuPage and Lisle Township Road District for the 2020 Road Maintenance Program.
Rocket?
A most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted. Mr. Pachowski?
DTP 11720, a contract to Current Contracting Company for coal patches needed from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021, for a contract not to exceed $50,000.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 11820, a contract to Comcast Minerals America, Inc., for bulk rock salt as needed from June 1st of 2020 to May 31st of 2021, for a contract not to exceed $1,216,950, the lowest responsible bid.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted.
DTP 11920, a contract to Precise MRMLLC for equipment and service equipment as needed from April 29th of 2020 to May 31st of 2021, for a contract not to exceed $47,790.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Move DTP 120-20, a contract to Hayen Associates Professional Landscape Design for county road projects for not to exceed $95,000.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted.
And finally, move to approve DTP 12120, a contract to Knight EA, Inc., for professional design engineering for bridge work, and not to exceed $300,918.10.
Second most favorable role?
Leave.
Leave is granted. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. A fine report. We move on to the Order of Business entitled Discussion. We're familiar with this Order of Business. This is mandated by a state law, giving us an opportunity to discuss pension obligation projections. Is anyone seeking recognition? Member Covert?
No.
Oh, your name is up on the screen. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the next Order of Business entitled Old Business. Old Business. Anyone seeking recognition on the Order of Old Business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hart?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up with something that Member Selman raised at our last board meeting regarding giving DuPage's Giving Days. They're taking place from April 14th to May 14th. I just want to thank all the board members that have either shared something on social media or have participated in their own right. For those that haven't, there's still time to participate, and for those in the community, there's still time to participate. Currently, over $79,000 has been raised through this initiative for our charities and nonprofits in DuPage County, many of whom are supporting residents impacted by COVID-19. So, we encourage to, encourage everyone to keep up the good work and participate. And again, we want to thank Shafali and Mary Keating for all their hard work on this initiative.
Thanks, Member Hart. Anyone else seeking recognition on the Order of Old Business? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, we move on to the next Order of Business entitled New Business. Anyone else, anyone seeking recognition on the Order of New Business?
Member Chaplin?
Member Chaplin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So, um, this morning, and I'm going to kind of touch on what Pete talked about under his report with Health and Human Services. I read a report in the Chicago Sun-Times that said that the city of Chicago is considering ordinance allowing first responders to get personal information about their residents that may have, that test positive for COVID. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So this morning, and I'm going to kind of touch on what Pete talked about under his report with Health and Human Services, I read a report in the Chicago Sun-Times that said that the city of Chicago is considering ordinance allowing first responders to get personal information about their residents that may have, that test positive for COVID. And then I read in that article that DuPage County had such a policy already in place. So I'm just surprised to learn that in the newspaper. You know, I don't know if anything was sent out to the board that this was a policy that somebody put in place. I don't know who did it. I'm not sure, you know, all of the background on that. But I, it does give me some concerns because, you know, there is HIPAA laws, and I'm sure that the state's attorney did look into that. You know, people's rights to privacy with their health issues, and also that it may give some of our first responders, I hope that when they go into a home or when they stop somebody, that they are acting as though every person that they come in contact with has COVID- nineteen. And, you know, I guess knowing that a house that you go into has a family or a member with COVID- nineteen helps. But I would hope that every home that they go into, they're using that same standard. And again, I am a little concerned about overstepping people's privacy rights and their, you know, I don't know if, you know, it's uncomfortable. I would like to see the policy. I knew nothing about it, so.
Okay, so let me offer this, if I may, please, and I see that there's a couple other folks seeking recognition. I know that our state's attorney was engaged in this matter because many police chiefs across the county, some of them had approached me and others, and they wanted to, they wanted access to this information because first responders felt they had a need. And my initial response was the same as yours, Member Chaplin. Well, you know, you should treat every home, every call, as if there's a COVID patient there. And the, and the test results have limited efficacy because it's, I mean, they may, they may not have a case today, but they may, they may test positive tomorrow because of the, the time that it takes for the virus to manifest itself. So, but it all came down to a shortage of P P E, I think. And so I give tremendous amount of credit to our state's attorney, who sat down with the State's Attorneys Association across the state of Illinois and our Attorney General Kwame Raoul. And I believe what we had, what we've struck is a good compromise. There is not, this is legally permitted. The state's attorney wouldn't be participating in, nor would the Attorney General give it his blessing. In fact, I think he's gone so far as to say that ours is a model, what we have proposed here. The information goes into their computer dispatch system, and it goes away after fourteen days. No one else is privy to it. So it's, I think it's measured. I know that our public health department was engaged in it. It's legal, it's permissible, it's measured, it's a compromise, and it's because our first responders don't have the luxury of donning personal protection equipment because of the shortage, because there's not enough, because we want to make sure that healthcare workers and others in long-term care facilities have the supplies. So I think what, what happened is, is it was a negotiation, there was a good deliberation, a collaboration, and then we came up with a path forward. And, and I do think that it's commendable because there wasn't a case where, you know, the police chiefs were suing our, our health department like we see in other areas of the state. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's not perfect, but I think given this emergency situation, this crisis, managing limited supplies and making sure that we're respectful and supportive of our first responders, I, I thought this was the right path to take. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on it because I'm aware of the criticism that was, there was a Tribune editorial as well. So, you know, I'm sure our state's attorney would be happy to share more information with you about it. But suffice it to say, it's legal, it's, it's permissible, it's a measured approach. We have the, the support and the endorsement, enthusiastic support of our Attorney General, as well as the State's Attorneys Association. The President of the State's Attorneys Association happens to also be a fine fellow from, from the Democratic side of the aisle. So it's bipartisan, and it enjoys support of the healthcare professionals. So I think it's a nice compromise. Further discussion?
Yeah. Oh, can I just follow up real quick? Just really quick. I just want to finish my talk on this. So thank you so much for that information. I appreciate it. It was very enlightening. So thank you, thank you for that, Chairman. But more to my point is that, you know, a lot of times we find things out in the newspaper rather than as a, as a board. And if you would have simply put what you just said in a memo to the board members, we might have saved ten minutes here today. So I appreciate what the information you gave me.
Glad that we had the ten minutes to talk about.
But I'm just saying, I, I think as board members, we should be notified of that type of, any kind of thing that, you know, is going to come up in the newspaper, and then we're not, we're reading it in the newspaper for the first time. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Member Ozog.
To follow up on Member Chaplin's point, if the, if the press has contacted the county about this, clearly you know about that. So I think-
They didn't contact the county. There was a letter that went out to the State's Attorneys Association. They got a hold of it from Kwame Raoul, and I think the chair, the mayor of the city of Chicago had an issue with it. So they, they have a little disagreement between the mayor of the city of Chicago and the Attorney General.
Okay, so the county didn't have knowledge that this was going to be in the press?
I didn't say that. I said that, oh, I don't know if it was, I did not know it was going to be in the press. No, I did not know that. And I had intended to discuss this this morning, so I'm glad that we're discussing it now.
Okay. Because going forward, obviously, you can't, I can't expect that we're going to be involved in every single discussion, especially in these heightened, with all of the various issues we're facing. But in terms of if the press has been contacted by-
No, we didn't contact the press.
Or if the contact, if the press is contacted-
I didn't talk to them. We did not talk to them. This was an issue that came to light because of a disagreement between the mayor and the Attorney General. And frankly, Pete Diciani brought it up in his remarks. So we are sharing, and we are disclosing, and we're talking about it again right now.
Okay. Well, in the effort of trans, in the issue of transparency, thank you. Chairman?
Yes, Member Desart.
Thank you. I'd like to-
And I'm going to work off of one agenda from now on. You were right.
Excellent. Thank you. It's the editor in me that finds these things. Listen, I want to give a couple of shout-outs. First of all, to the excellent leadership at the DuPage County Health Department, and specifically to Dennis Brennan, who gives us feedback every single day, Saturdays, Sundays, he's there about four o'clock, four-thirty. Every single day, he gives the board members a detailed email, which I then share with my constituents, as too many of you do as well. So thank you to the DuPage County Health Department. And also, I want folks watching and listening or reading about this later to really understand how remarkable Janelle Chadwick at the DuPage County Care Center really is, the leadership she provides. You all have read the news, so you know that here in Illinois especially, nursing homes and care centers are the vast majority of COVID- nineteen virus incidents and deaths. And we do not have one guest at the care center with the virus. And I think that's incredibly truly remarkable. So thank you to those two people, Dennis Brennan and to Janelle Chadwick. Thank you.
You're welcome. Or thank you. I agree with you. Further discussion on the Order of New Business? Yes, anyone else?
Chairman Cronin?
Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Covert.
I just wanted to give a shout-out to a few people. Last week, I had an idea to provide the, provide care packages to inmates who observe Ramadan, the month of Ramadan, at the DuPage County Jail. And the Islamic Center of Naperville and their wonderful volunteers, they put together the care packages within three days and made the donation. So I just wanted to thank Brother Gashif and Sister Asifa, Brother Gashif, who's the president of Islamic Center of Naperville, for all his help and the coordination with, I want to thank Sheriff Jim Mendrick, Deputy Sheriff Eddie Moore, and Mike Berry of Just DuPage, and all the wonderful volunteers providing the necessities for their inmates and showing that compassion for them. So I wanted to wish a happy Ramadan to all those who celebrate and a happy early Eve as well.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion? Member Chaplin? I got it. Member Renahan seeking recognition, I'm told, followed by Member Diciani.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to circle back to Tony Charlton. As a newer member, I didn't have the depth of time with him and to get to know everything, but he definitely said, come to my office, and I'll teach you whatever you know about flooding and the rest of that. You know, I really appreciate that. Someone who went above and beyond as a, as a, to a new person, a staffer, I really do. Thanks, Tony, and best of luck to you.
I'm just trying to get Member Zay to cry.
Member Diciani.
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to our schools who are feeding a lot of our, our underprivileged folks. I was talking to several of our superintendents as I've been talking about the, the resolution that we passed today to help folks out and make sure we don't crush our schools. You know, tens of thousands, even over a hundred thousand meals prepared and delivered in District Eighty-eight, District Forty-five, District Forty-four, District Two oh five has got over ten thousand meals, Fenton, over twenty-one thousand meals. So we have a lot of, a lot of people stepping up in these tough times, especially our schools. We think that they're off right now, but they're actually feeding a lot of these, these underprivileged kids and families, et cetera. So very proud of them. I also want to give a shout-out to our healthcare workers and our first responders, our paramedics who are going to the door, and firefighters, and, and, you know, nurses and the doctors. You know, this is a very, very tough time. I consoled my wife Sunday, who lost a patient, a twenty-six-year-old patient, who just delivered a baby at Loyola, and, and, you know, no mother for this, this, this poor son, and, and a mom who died of COVID. It's a very, very tough situation on these healthcare workers. I'm really concerned for their mental health after this is all over with. I hope it's over with as quickly as possible, but they are seeing massive amounts of death, and nobody's immune to that. Nobody understands how tough that is on a fam, on a person. And people are seeing this every day. So I give, I give total credit to, to those people that are watching this happen and dealing with it firsthand every day, putting their lives on the line because they're in a position where they might get COVID because they're a caregiver, and yet they're, they're watching this happen. So we need to really do something for these folks. When this, this is all said and done, there's just going to be a lot of mental health challenges for these people that have witnessed a lot of this sacrifice. So, so I pray for them, and I respect what they do every day. Thank you.
You, Member Diciani. Further discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition on the Order of New Business? I hear somebody.
Tornatori.
Sam Tornatori, how are you?
Good morning. Good morning. I too would like to thank all of the people who have worked so hard, particularly at the Health Department during this crisis. Given my situation with the Health Department and being on the board with Bob Larson, we spend probably more time with them than some of the other members, and I can tell you that they've been working twenty-four seven to not only try to keep us healthy, but keep us informed, as Member Desart has indicated. To kind of circle back on what Member Chaplin had raised earlier, as you know, the issue regarding disclosing COVID- nineteen positive households was a compromise collaborative effort between the Health Department, Bob Berlin, and the State's Attorney's Office. We were engaged in some discussion with that. Public health sector didn't want anybody to know who was positive. The law enforcement people obviously wanted to know which homes were, had positive COVID residents. This compromise that Bob Berlin put together with his association was the best-case scenario that we could come up with, short of going to court. Had this been like McHenry County, where the sheriff would have filed a lawsuit against its Health Department, probably anyone who would have been tested positive for COVID would have been known to the general public. What we have now is only the P staffs know about it. When someone calls in, and a nine-one-one call, and that home has a positive COVID resident there, it's flagged, so that the first responders who go to that home know that they're going to a home with a positive COVID responder. No one else knows. No one else needs to know. We know who knows and who doesn't know, so we can keep controlled, by we, I'm saying, public health, as well as the Police Department. So it was a, something we could control as opposed to the courts. So it's terribly important, I think, to understand that. I think, I think the fact that it was not out in the public is an important thing, because people really don't need to know who's got a COVID- nineteen resident in their homes. And it was something I was going to bring up this morning as well to let you all know. But certainly, the Health Department has worked very, very hard to keep us informed, and to Karen and Dennis and Rash, Rashmi Chug, our medical director, and all that they've done. Thank you. I'm very proud to be associated with those people because they worked extremely hard during this crisis.
Very nice. Thank you, Sam. Further discussion, Members Zay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it, it concerns me, and I think food for discussion here, and when we talk to regional leaders, I had talked to Murray Snow and emailed Karen Aiello at the Health Department. You know, we are a county of almost a million people, and when we talk about our first responders and our hospitals, and the need for P P E, it doesn't seem like, thank goodness, we're getting a lot of donations from our residents, but it doesn't seem like we're getting a lot from the state at this point. I mean, I continually hear about donations going to the city of Chicago and the Cook County, and, you know, I looked at the Illinois Department of Public Health's website, you know, been looking at it, and, you know, we only have, they only have one testing site listed for DuPage County. Talked with Karen, there's probably four. I know our, you know, our hospitals are doing that, but again, we need to, you know, push out there that, you know, we have residents that need to be tested. We have needs to, I mean, to only get forty-six thousand masks from the state so far, that's been distributed between Department of Homeland Security and Health Department, and fifteen thousand K and ninety-five masks, that's not a lot for a county this big. And I'm just worried about our medical people, our first responders, that we need to let them know that, you know, we need help. I mean, every day we hear about new testing facilities opening in the city or out in Aurora, but we don't hear anything about coming to DuPage. And I would think a county that's as large as us, you know, would possibly maybe get on the radar screen and getting some testing and some help from the state. I mean, I'm just proud of our board and our elected officials that we continue to do stuff. We City United States Houses and the Senates and City Chicago's, our local park district and school boards. I'm just amazed that why the Illinois House and Senate hasn't come into session yet or done anything on this. I mean, the governor's basically doing this on his own. So hopefully, they'll figure something out. We've talked about it, but in times of need, when we're a non-home rule community, and we have to look to the state of Illinois, and the House and the Senate for passes of legislation, they're nowhere to be found. And, you know, maybe that is a discussion we've talked about, about home rule, because, you know, we have no one to go to at this point. I know the chairman's been working hard and on the phone twenty-four seven, but, you know, we have to look out for DuPage, and possibly in the future, this is some discussion that needs to be had with, you know, some other people in the state and with our elected officials. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just note, we hear this national discussion from states like New York and elsewhere, saying, hey, we pay more to the federal government than we get back from the federal government. How about taking care of us? Well, I would remind everyone that DuPage County is a huge net exporter of dollars down to Springfield. We don't get back nearly what we send down there. And so there should be consideration for us and what we contribute to the state, and we should be properly taken care of as specified by Members Zay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I feel compelled to offer a thought here. We, we have enjoyed a good working relationship with this administration. At the same time, I think it, we got to take care of DuPage. We got to use the resources and the know-how and the personnel and the expertise that, that, that we have here in, in DuPage County, taking the initiative and, and, and at the same time, working with the administration, but not overly relying on them. So as we go forward, I, I think that that approach is going to be more and more sort of the guidelines for how we proceed. A lot of people are really frustrated and, and really, a lot of small businesses are in pain, and they want to reopen. I have been engaged with the DuPage mayors and managers and working, I talked about this two weeks ago, but we, at our last board meeting, but we, we do have a process underway where we will be developing a plan. And we want to make sure the plan is thoughtful and deliberative, and that it has the input and support of, of public health officials. But, you know, how we approach reopening our economy in DuPage may very well be different than how the city of Chicago may approach opening their economy. We're going to work together, we're going to collaborate, but we're also going to assert ourselves, because if the facts and the data, it compels us to move in that direction, then I suspect that's, that's what we'll do. But it's real important to be communicating, collaborating, sharing, and, and we will continue to do that because that's, that's the way we do business here. Any further discussion on the Order of New Business? Yes, please. Yeah, who's that? Sheila Rutledge?
Mayor, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Ozog, I'm sorry. I don't see your face on my screen. Sorry. Please proceed. Member Ozog.
I'd like to add that our state representatives are extremely approachable and would be very happy to hear from every board member if you have issues in terms of how P P E, all sorts of other issues are being handled. This is a very difficult time, but we are also dealing with a federal government that daily seems to change its message. No, we don't want to go that, down that path.
Well, I mean, okay.
We're going to assess blame or issue-
Nobody's blaming anybody.
Let's definitely talk to our representatives.
I do. We do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I hope that concludes our discussion on the Order of New Business. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, I am advised that we do not have anything to come before us on the Order of Executive Sessions, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, May twelfth, at ten a.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.